I hear box call to order the Northborough School Committee Open Meeting dated Wednesday, January 4, 2017. Happy New Year. We'll begin with an action on the open meeting minutes of December 7, 2016.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes for Wednesday, December 7, 2016. Second?
Seconded. Any discussion, any changes? No? Yes?
Surprisingly, when we typed it, I wouldn't, you'd think I would be making a requested edit, but we did have a conversation about, I think, the Peasleys' nature's classroom.
Nature's classroom.
And we did recognize Mrs. Ariella Greenspan. We'd also like to add to this Mrs. Claire Kelsey's name.
Yes.
Because they were both here that evening and both are very much involved in making that experience so successful for our children.
Very much.
So if we could just add her name as well?
Absolutely, good yet.
And apologize to Claire for the omission. Please.
I amend the motion.
If you want to amend the motion.
I will amend my motion to add the addition on the nature's classroom item. I second that.
All right. Any other discussion? None, all those a favor? Thank you. And now we will move on to new business. We have a couple of grants and donations to approve.
Yes, very exciting grants to share with you this evening. And again, a donation to recognize and extend our greatest appreciation for the support of the good work that we have going on in our schools. I think it's very timely to, this evening, that we share this wonderful grant award that has been extended to Malekhan Medical Middle School because we will be talking about the preliminary budget. And I think it's a powerful message to send to our community that not only do we look to the town for support, but within our school structure, we're always looking and seeking other opportunities to help expand what we do and to provide some seed money, if you will, for innovative new programs. This is one such grant award. And I want to extend to the Malekhan Middle School staff, just well done, congratulations on not only receiving, writing, first of all, which takes time, in addition to all they do in the school day, to write these grants, often very extensive process, taking a lot of additional time, but really for continuing to have that entrepreneurial spirit that is so much connected to providing programs that support identified needs for our student population. And so what I'd love to do is to say that this grant award is in the amount of $218,020 for a three-year grant, which will support the employment of staff and help with some additional resources that are needed to really provide venture funding for this program. What it also does is allow us time to examine the program, its successes, and slowly provide funding for this in the operational budget, once that sunset provision is realized in the grant. And the person who can best explain how this grant will be used is really the principal representing the staff who really authored this. So I think Michelle has also, I'm going to call Stacy up as well, right? I think Stacy might be your co-speaker on this tonight. So Stacy Glickman, you may have met her earlier. Stacy is our newest Assistant Director. Stacy is of Student Support Services. She rounds out our triumvirate for student support administration at Central Office and has really provided some excellence in the areas of Student Support Services and the development of programming. Again, you'll be hearing a little bit more about some of the work that's taking place in the district. And congratulations to the collaborative partnership that's existed through this process. So I'd like to turn it over to Stacy and Michelle.
I'll start. Okay. Thank you. So we have seen a need for a therapeutic program at the middle school level over time. As we know, kids' mental health needs are increasing, and we believe that we can support them within our schools. This grant opportunity presented itself, and Lori Partey, our district nurse leader, our school nurse, Linda DeFutis, Chatham Flynn, our adjustment counselor, and Karen Rose, the district V C B A, really worked on putting this grant together, gathering data, researching, and writing the grant with the help of me, obviously, to pull things together. The grant is to support our STEPS program. That stands for Student Tiered Educational Program for Success. And the grant is modeled after the Bright program, which is a program from Brookline. There are a lot of high schools who have a Bright program in their schools, not very many middle schools, actually, so we're one of a handful that are going to be implementing the Bright model. We're really excited about it. Algonquin has a version of it, so we are very excited to be able to provide this kind of continuum of services for kids. The program is designed to support recovery and continued healing in a therapeutic environment for students and to promote stabilization, reintegration, and resiliency for at-risk kids experiencing mental health issues or med- and/or medical issues. Currently, we are supporting 12 students in the STEPS program. The connection with the Bright model and the foundation that provided the grant will be very helpful in terms of data collection, staffing, outcomes measurement, and things like that. So a team is headed to the foundation next week to meet with the grant providers to understand more specifically what our requirements are going to be on our end, but we're really excited about it. I know we'll have more information to share when we present our school improvement plan in terms of success of the program, but we're very excited about it. It's great. So with Stacy's help, and I'll let Stacy speak, but Stacy has a background in establishing these types of programs, we have been able to get started with it, so this grant money is going to propel us to the next level.
So thank you for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's a privilege to be here in Northborough. I came into a region that is really well-established and has some really good structures in place to support kids who are struggling with social-emotional health needs. I think one of the pieces that this program so comprehensively will allow for us is to help kind of identify kids much earlier, provide intensive intervention, and then reintegration back into the school environment. So not only will it really help us to support our students holistically, but also the families that they're coming from and being able to connect with outside resources and partner with outside agencies. So this really will be kind of a town-school collaboration. And it's exciting to be creating an exemplary program in this district, and we're excited to come back and present the data that we've learned to you in the next couple of months.
Great. Any questions from my colleagues? Comments? Please?
Well, I'm just blown away. I thought this had to be a typo, $218,000.
Not this time.
$18,000. I know we're one district of community, one community of learners, but I'm still kind of curious if you had to break it out, approximately, what portion of that would be to the Northborough schools, Northborough Public Schools?
A hundred percent.
This is all Malekhan.
Yes.
This is all Malekhan.
The grant was for the, a middle school therapeutic program.
It's to establish, this is for Malekhan.
So the $218,000, this for Malekhan's program?
Over three years, yeah.
So I do want to say, while you're asking the question, the letter
Yes.
that came back said the public schools of Northborough and Southborough. In part, it's because we have an affiliation with them, and as they mentioned, the high school received similar amounts of funding. I contacted them and made sure that they were aware because the grant application is just from the Northborough School District. And I contacted them this week and made them aware that this is what their letter says, that they may want to correct that because all of the funding is allocated to the public schools of Northborough as the grant was submitted. They said they realize that the letter is fine the way it is, and they recognize that in this case, just like it was with Algonquin, is a single-funded source. So that's a good call on the letter, and I know that's probably what caused some confusion.
And I guess this would be more geared, the question, to you. So this will establish the program at Malekhan, and then, over time, we'll absorb that under the general operating budget moving forward. So this is for three years?
Right. So one of the wonderful things about a funding stream that lasts for multiple years instead of just one year, you actually get to live with the program. And you gather data, and you have evidence of the program's success. And through this sort of funding source, you're able to really create a successful program that's no longer a model, but it's a systemic, viable, ongoing program that is part of what we offer our students. So that three years will allow us not only transitional time, because obviously spiking $200,000 roll-in at one point in one budget year is about a 1% or a slightly more increase to the budget in a year. So we'll have time to really evaluate, assess the importance of the program, certainly the benefits to our student and our families and the greater school community, how that transitions into the high school, because the data also will transition to the high school as well. There should be some residual benefit passed on to the high school experience as well in their program. So it would be a transition of such into that program. So we are well on our way with postings and hiring, as the grant was written and provides for, and we're hoping that that will be operationalized soon to expand the good work that's already in place.
Congratulations.
I had one question, but it's probably off-topic, because you mentioned the high school has a version. I just was wondering how far along, would they get a similar grant of the same amount?
Yes, go.
Do you, okay, I was wondering how far along they were on, because they're starting to implement, and that's just kind of.
Yeah.
Is that one expiring actually then?
No, they have, again, the same sunset provision, and they have a few, maybe a year and a half or so more on it. And their focus is similar, but obviously because of the grade span and the age span, it's focus is a little bit different. But again, providing those very critical services for students who may be transitioning back to the high school after an experience or an extended placement for therapeutic purposes elsewhere. So again, it's a transitional program back to the high school to get re-acclimated to this high school experience, but again, offered through the Metro West Foundation. They continue to be a phenomenal partner with our communities and really support and recognize the importance of the social-emotional health and wellbeing of our students in our communities.
Is that called the Bright program or not?
It's modeled after the Bright program.
Because theirs haven't met Algonquin?
Is theirs the Rise?
It's the Rise program.
It's the Rise program.
Yeah. So ours is STEPS. We named it, and it, we're customizing it for us, but there's a framework through which we are working. And we're very connected with Algonquin and have learned from their experiences as well, so we are, that partnership has grown too.
Great. Okay, please.
Because it's in line with Student Support Services, does this mean that the award and the grant money is to be used exclusively for students who are on I E Ps or currently receiving?
No, it will be, it will be for general education students as well as students who are covered under 504 and individual education programs.
So just based on the?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Keith?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you. We're really excited, very excited.
And I look forward to hearing a little more about how the program evolves and some details about.
Yeah.
Some more clarity on exactly how certain means of the student.
Absolutely.
Exciting.
Thank you.
And I just want to add my thanks as well. Great job. It's phenomenal. I'm thrilled that you did this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, it's, I would also like to just ask, I guess whoever would communicate, just the gratitude of the committee to Metro West Health Foundation and their support for
Continued support.
Our district continues to support. So again, please thank them for the grant.
And also the folks at Malekhan who really spearheaded this, with Michelle's leadership to make this happen. While Michelle is still here, I know she's still moved forward with great news. Last month, Michelle was unable to be here with us, and we wanted to keep the good news about the student recipient who received that STEM grant to, for you to share when you, this month. So if you wanted to mention anything about that and how the funds might be used.
I'd love to, sure. So Raytheon offers scholarships and grants through their annual Math Moves You Middle School Program. We've had students over the years apply for the grant, and sometimes we get it and sometimes we don't. But last year, we had a sixth grader who applied for the grant and got it, and I, this was last year, so I met with him again today to say, can you remind me what you, what you wrote your grant? Because I remembered it, but I, and he told me, and it's, he did his on enumerative combinatorics. And I said, oh, well, what is that? So he was talking about patterns and numbers, and he's, he's very excited about math. So the basis for the grant is how does math put the action in your passion? This is a student very passionate about math, seventh grader now. So he was awarded the grant, and then the matching $1,000 comes to the school. And we are using the money to purchase some Chromebooks, to implement some tech stations in the math classrooms, to enrich and support our mathematics classroom. Andrew Lee.
Yeah, I knew it.
All right. Excellent. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to vote to approve the very generous Metro West Health Foundation grant. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Northborough School Committee approves and accepts the grant from the Metro West Health Foundation in the amount of $218,020.
Seconded.
Seconded. And this would be roll call, because it's money? No? We don't, no? Okay, so we'll just do, okay, all those a favor? Again, congratulations.
I mean, it's well worth it, roll call.
Yes. We get four yeses, so it was unanimously approved.
Thank you.
So again, thank you.
And again, another donation to recognize for the Peasley School and all of the good work they're doing around STEM. And I think this grant is specifically dedicated to advancing the STEM initiatives that are underway at Peasley. It's an anonymous donor, but Jill might, Dr. Barnhart might want to share some thoughts about how that funding would be used.
Certainly. So yes, we were very excited to be surprised with a gift of $500, and the only request that came along with it was, would we be willing to use it to support some kind of a STEM initiative, mathematics, science, technology, engineering? So we are right now in the process of determining what we think we might use it, and we also have been informed that there might be a matching corporate gift that would come along with this. So we are looking at combining this with some other funds that we've received this year and looking at purchasing a 3D printer for the students. We have one that we share with the other elementary schools and seeing it in action and seeing the incredible thinking that students invest into creating and programming and producing. What we started with was 3D snowflakes. It's amazing. It is just amazing. And the teachers are convinced, so we had students at third, fourth, and fifth grade doing this design work, and the teachers are convinced that those students could also work with our younger students to do the same. So watching kids go through that innovative design process and then actually be able to use a computer along with a printer to create an actual item is really exciting. That's what we're thinking at this point.
Great.
We're also very excited, if I could just add one more thing on here. Today, we received the shipment of our Imagination Playground.
Oh.
Which is the huge blue-bolt blocks that we purchased with the funding from N E F. So they just arrived today, and we can't wait to break them out and start playing.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Northborough School Committee accepts with our thanks the anonymous donation in the amount of $500 from a Peasley family.
All right, all those a favor? And please convey, again, the thanks from the committee to the family. But we're very, again, gracious, we're thankful for the gracious donation, so.
Great support. Thank you.
All right. We have no old business, apparently, so we can skip over that, and we can go to the Fiscal Year '17 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, which you have in your packets.
Reporting tonight that there are no significant variances and would request a vote to approve until audited.
I will entertain a motion. Mr. Cress?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Fiscal Year 2017 Budget General Fund Expenditure Report as of December 29, 2016 until audited.
Seconded.
All right. Any conversation? Hearing none, all those a favor? Thank you. And now, we have the Fiscal Year '18 Budget Goals, so everything's still.
Right, in the packet are the budget goals that have been approved, and we will be revisiting those as I present the preliminary budget this evening. Very excited to provide updates on what it means to identify a goal and operationalize that goal in the form of a budget. And I think we're hearing some of that, just with the donations and the work that is going, is taking place in our schools. So that is in your packet, as well as the budget calendar. We continue to add, as we do each and every year, those meetings that we've had that are directly related to putting together a preliminary budget that is educationally sound and fiscally responsible. I might add that Patty Cress and Joan Frank, along with myself and Cheryl Levesque, attended this year's December 15 Annual Event, and it is an amazing presentation on the fiscal condition of the town of Northborough, presented in detail by our town administrator, award-winning at that, from what we understand. The town also received another note of recognition for this presentation and the budget process in the form of the Financial Trend Monitoring Report. There are pieces of what was distributed in your packets this evening, and I'm sure it's available on cable access, but that was held on December 15. And for those of us involved in putting together the preliminary budget, it's very valuable information to hear and to absorb as we appreciate that we are partners in developing our budget with the town. And. Good.
If you want to.
I was happy to represent this committee there that evening, and feel free to ask me any questions about it if you have any at any other time. It was a publicly posted meeting. I'm happy to share the discussion that went on, or lack of discussion that went on that evening. We did not have a quorum. I'll just say, we did not have a quorum. As you just mentioned, it was just Joan and myself, so we will not have to approve any minutes.
There you go.
But it was publicly posted.
Okay. Well, I can thank you for attending and representing the committee.
Enrollments. Enrollments, the discussion of enrollments and our class size policy and our class sizes is always a critical piece of the overall development of the preliminary budget. And in fact, once again, I'm going to report that the implementation, following the policy changes that we made in our class size policy, continue to yield benefit to us as we plan our budget for next year. There is a lot of information in your packet, along with the class size policy once again, including the kindergarten information that was shared this year, registrations are information packets next week, ninth, 10th, and 11th, I think, at all of our schools.
10, 11, 12.
Ninth and 10th?
10, 11, 12.
10, 11, 12, one day off. Next week.
Next week.
And available at all schools with a registration return of no later than February 3rd. This information, it will be very helpful for us as we present the final recommended budget, because oftentimes it is, in fact, the numbers that come forward that help us decide what kindergarten model we'll be using or will be having in place next year. I will say that the kindergarten letter that was sent this year in partnership with the principals really provided a lot more information about what that would look like in terms of enrollment and really reviewed once again the class size policy and the options that we as a district maintain and retain for determining whether or not there will be a half-day model, how that half-day model will operate next year, and where is a separate program will, it may be housed. So again, just some clarifying points that, over time, we've recognized may come up with questions and thought we'd answer them in the form of the communication that was sent home. So that's exciting news. As we continue to look at our class size enrollments, again, it is my belief that we will be looking at these numbers once again before we present the final budget, the recommended budget. And shortly thereafter, we will probably be coming to you with some recommended closings of class sizes and classes in various grades in our, in our fourth school kindergarten, our K5s. So last year, we made the announcement in June, because it was a new policy that we were implementing, and we needed time to assess. This year, because we have a year of experience and we know that our class sizes, in some cases, are right pretty much at what we would say is desirable by policy and recommended by policy, that we want to give ample time for anyone who's moving into the district to appreciate what that would mean, and then really find and provide them with the information regarding placement for next year, so they have time to get to know the schools. So it's my expectation that we will, I will probably be coming to you in March with some recommendations about capping a couple of the classes in various schools. But a little premature, that's why it's preliminary, but again, just wanted to share that information.
All right. We also have our Fiscal Year '18 Capital Plan in your packet.
Very excited about the capital plan. I will start the plan rolling, if you will, and mention that our capital subcommittee has met to review this. It is in draft form this evening pending your approval, vote to approve. And I will say a lot of time and effort by the subcommittee and by members of Central Office and Tom Mailer have been spent on putting this plan together. As we know, it's fluid. Critical incidences can occur at any point when you're talking about capital assets that would require us to shift and reprioritize. I will also share with you that the town is still sort of analyzing its fiscal situation with respect to funding capital improvements. I did hear from Mr. Codere this afternoon, actually, at about 4:30, and he reassured me and wanted me to communicate with you all that the schools continue to be a priority, and to whatever extent is possible, he will look to support some of the items on the capital plan. If that takes place, I believe what is most targeted is the completion of the Proctor Roof. And so we will know better in another month, and I'm sure I'll be sharing that with you around February or certainly the March committee meeting. Cheryl, I don't know if you want to add anything as well?
I guess we could just add that the only item that's new to this list, the plan that we did not have on our plan last year, is the Z-School Roof. And just because we always do keep an eye out into the future, and that is 2023. I mean, it seems like a ways away, but we certainly want to take care of our assets.
Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest we table the vote on this capital plan and give Mr. Codere another month to reevaluate the town's numbers and if we could, perhaps, I know my own personal concern is with the Proctor Roof, and I would love to see that bumped up to Fiscal Year 2018, if that is a possibility. I think at the time that the capital group, the capital subcommittee met, and I completely agree with all the items that were on this plan, and Tom Mailer did, he was, came to our meeting, he did a really great job expressing the need for these items. The roof repair Proctor is the one that does concern me the most, and I'd like to see if our town administrator could possibly fit that into Fiscal Year '18. Is it worth us waiting a month and giving it another shot?
No, yes. I think, you know, the bottom line, I think it doesn't affect the numbers.
No.
It will alter it by the $300,000 that the town may be able to support. The other items will not shift. So what that will do is just bring that into FY 2018, and it certainly has no effect one way or the other, other than we'll bring it back for a revote.
So I mean, it's up to my, I don't mind making a motion to approve with that contingency or perhaps, maybe I, I know myself, I would be a little bit more comfortable if we could table it for a month. I don't know how the members feel.
I would just recommend we table it.
Yeah, we don't even need to take a vote. We just recommend that we table it, or we choose to table it.
Yeah, revisit it.
Revisit it next month.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm glad you, the committee has had an opportunity to take a look at this. I'm glad you, the committee has had an opportunity to take a look at this because I think it's important as we enter into the budget conversations to at least review it collectively, and certainly the vote can wait.
And during the financial trends monitoring, it, the topic of school roofs was very frequently mentioned that we are a town that takes care of our roofs, especially our school roofs.
Yes.
So I'm hoping that perhaps this is something that can be funded in fiscal year twenty eighteen. So perhaps we can go back and, you know, ask our town administrator one more time for, and if it's just not feasible, just let us know, and we can revisit next month.
It never hurts to ask, and if there's room, why not do it sooner rather than later?
And I want to reassure the committee, I don't even, I think we're beyond the asking. I think we're in the queue, so definitely on everyone's radar, and I have every confidence that he will be able to provide us with some update in the next thirty days or so.
And I know Tom's not here. The roof is not in peril of collapsing, or there's no safety issue. It's just, this is just.
It's aged.
Aged, and it's time for a little fix-up, so.
It is.
The other thing that was, if I may, the other thing that was mentioned that it does make more sense for our timing to be more in line with each other, and since the other portion of the roof was just recently done, it just kind of makes sense to keep it closer time-wise with each other. In my mind, Tom brought that up, and it makes sense to me as well.
And it would also split up so that you're not taking a bigger bite in two thousand and nineteen. You break it up a little bit, so there's a lot of valid reasons for maybe moving that forward. Certainly, we'll address that with our town manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson, and she can give the fiscal year eighteen preliminary budget presentation.
That's right, thank you very much. There are copies of the line item budget. I think each school committee member has one, and we will certainly distribute them out. I'm very excited to be able to present this budget this evening. How are you? Good, how are you? There has been.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good.
This is always an interesting two-handed presentation, but in reality, there's a lot of hands that go into putting this budget together each and every year. And I'm very excited to share with you that there's been tremendous collaboration with our town, with all of our school principals and administration, with our teachers, and I feel very confident that we are putting together this evening a very educationally sound preliminary budget, and one that is really in keeping with our desire to be a fiscally responsible partner with the town. So here we have, hard to believe, already FY eighteen. And hello. So we'll try the old-fashioned way. We start with our vision and our mission statement. Mr. Brem, perhaps you can handle the dysfunction with the clicker this evening.
It's sleeping.
It's sleeping. So we start always with where we begin a lot of our conversations, not only here at our school committee meetings, but within our schools. Are we fulfilling our mission to our school community, to our parents, and most importantly, to our students? This mission, this, thank you, this mission, it's awake. This mission statement can be found on many documents through, out our website, and also very prominently displayed on our strategic plan, as well as all of our budget documents. Each and every year, it's important to review all of the work that's gone into the creation of a budget, and certainly all of the steps that are involved in creating a preliminary budget, which will hopefully lead in short order to the recommended budget that we will present to the school committee. Our process begins very early in the school year in September, and in September, we begin to take a look at and assess our goals for the upcoming school year. In September of next year, we'll already be talking about nineteen. And so throughout this process, we meet with all of the stakeholders that are involved in putting forth a responsible budget, and also meet with our school committee, subcommittees, and our discussions here at school committee each year. That process marches forward with successful completion and always a positive outlook for a well-supported vote at town meeting, and that will be April twenty-fourth. This is an opportune time to once again extend our greatest appreciation to the school committee, community, for its support of the public schools of Northborough. Our greatest resource certainly are our students, and they are certainly a product of an amazing community that is committed to public education, and we thank you for that work. The Northborough School Committee budget goals were very much, first and foremost, as they always are, part of a conversation as we develop this budget. What I'd like to do this evening is address each goal and give tangible evidence as to how those goals actually play out, not only in the day-to-day experience in our schools and within our school community, but also in presenting the preliminary budget. So I'm going to walk through sort of the experiences that we've created in district for our students, and also the kinds of things that we're asking to support futuristically with the FY eighteen budget. The first goal, and we heard a little bit about this in our conversation around the capital plan, and also with our class size policy. So with our class size policy this year, we were really able to maintain our class sizes across the district and really support the recommended budgets, the recommended class size numbers that are in our policy I two forty. Again, I mentioned earlier when we talked about enrollments that the primary underlying reason for making the changes was to support our class size policy. But as we began the preliminary budget conversation this year, we realized that it took on another level of importance as we were able to clearly define our staffing requirements sooner than later, knowing that in September, we wouldn't be struggling with spikes in enrollments that happened over the summer and trying to meet required staffing levels after a budget had been approved. This year, we're actually being able to have those conversations sooner so that when that budget is approved, we are confident that with our staffing model, we'll be able to support the class size policy. I want to extend, again, a tremendous appreciation for those folks who helped implement what could have been a very complex process, and to those families who appreciated the really underscoring value of this policy, which was, not it may be in the year they move in, but in subsequent years, it guarantees our class size policy. And I also want to share that we will be reaching out to the families. I'll be placing a call to each one, asking them if they would like to stay in their neighborhood school that they were placed in this year, or move to, or remain in the school they were placed in this year, or move to their neighborhood. So we want to follow through and through with the policy that we've created. Meeting the needs of all learners with a classroom model of differentiated instruction and standards-based education. We just heard a perfect example of what we do, of what that looks like when we say not only do we want to meet the needs of all learners with a supportive classroom model, but combine that with provide programs and staffing to meet the social and emotional health of all children. This year, through the support of the grant that we received that Malacan Middle School authored, we'll be able to realize some of, both of those goals. But also, in this year's budget, I'm putting forth a request for an additional point five mathematics coordinator. Last year, we were able to share that position with Southborough Schools, and we were able to share a one-point-oh position. We quickly realized, as we suspected, the value of having a dedicated person to not only assist the teachers, but the parents in understanding the changes in the math curriculum, and to really provide workshops and day-to-day support for our teachers, and also, most importantly again, for our students as we continue to introduce and implement our new mathematics curriculum aligned with the state standards. So what we're putting forth is a point five in Northborough and a point five in Southborough, therefore giving each community the equivalent of a one-point-oh. I would also add that in Northborough, we were able to put that position in as it was partially grant-funded under Title I. That partial grant funding for the half of the position is still going to be in place next year. So this year, we're requesting a point five in the operational budget so that we can support a full one-point-oh staffing position. In addition to this, I'm delighted that we have some members of central office here because they're available to answer questions as we move through the budget process on really focused areas of growth that we've identified. We heard a little bit about a therapeutic model that Malacan Middle is moving forward with, and we, through some amazing dialogue, creative thinking, and innovative mindset, have created a therapeutic program to begin at the K-five levels. Because we also recognize the importance of moving forward this as soon as feasible, physically feasible, we capitalized on some savings that we realized through very strategic hiring this year, and also some reductions in anticipated costs. And we bundled those funds, and were able to begin this program this year and address the needs of the students that have been identified. We also, again, enjoy the benefit of partnering with a neighboring community, Southborough, because they too are looking forward to moving, moving forward with a similar position. The benefit to Northborough, a cost sharing of costs related to hiring high-quality staff to work with our students each and every day. The staffing model requires a special educator, and that will be represented in Southborough's budget. The Northborough portion will be a licensed clinical social worker. We also have benefited for some time by the services of some excellent consultants and providers that have worked with us to build programs over the years, and they will be partnering with us as well. And so we are able to pilot this program this year. That will allow us, if we fund that clinical position in next year's budget, to move forward with a viable, well-thought-through and implemented program. First and foremost, our students and our parents are the primary beneficiaries. Secondarily, we are able to retain our students in district and provide services to them so that they can remain in our neighborhood schools. There is a financial benefit, and that financial benefit then is realized in our ability to do other kinds of things because students will not be going out of districts of district if we have a program that we can offer them of equivalent or that, or more importantly, higher value because it's in their neighborhood school community. So there is definitely a cost, a tangible cost benefit to bringing that program in-house. Stacy Seers, she has worked very closely with our student support service team and has great familiarity with a program like this having put one together in that other district. And we're just happy she's not in that other district right now. And thank you again to the principals and the team of dedicated staff at the building to help realize this goal. We also, again, each year, the principals come with a list and have identified needs in their buildings very well-thought-out and crafted lists of concerns or areas that they would like to see growth or improvement to meet student needs, and those are ever-changing. This year, again, the initial request, which you're not going to see in the budget, was for additional special educators. After much conversation, we've determined that we're able to meet those needs in-house by realizing some personnel shifts, and we will be launching next year two language-based programs. And again, I'm certainly willing to turn that over to the experts if we need to answer some questions on that. There is no tangible cost in the preliminary budget for this program launch, but there is a tangible savings because we are going to reassign and restructure the services and how we provide the services. We feel better meeting the needs of those services, students in the language-based program, but also all of the services in the school setting. So I'm really pleased to suggest that that is a tremendous cost savings while meeting the needs of our students. And oftentimes, that's not visible in a budget when it's presented because we talk about the upside to the cost. We don't really talk about the work that's taking place, much like the grant and the clinical program that we're able to start this year. That's, that never comes forward in a budget presentation. So it's very important, I think, as we think about this budget, to talk about those three things that take place. Again, primary benefit to students and parents and the school community. The benefit, again, tangible benefit is we will retain students in-house when we can establish that program. And we have an excellent history of doing that, again, at the K-five. So tonight, I'm hoping that what is being heard clearly is we are recognizing these needs in many and varied ways, K-eight, through good work of a lot of people. I could go on, because we're very proud of this work. But let's move on to some other budget goals. We talked a little bit earlier about the capital plan, and through good work of Cheryl and Tom Maitler, and the support from the school committee, the school community, and our towns. We, of course, have Lincoln Street to be very proud of, that we can't forget. It's still, it seems like probably some time ago because Jen's not reporting out on it every week, every month, but it's still a new reality for us in town. And we can't thank the community enough for that and the teachers enough for all their due diligence through that process. But those are the kinds of conversations that are ongoing. We don't let something that needs to be addressed languish, we address it. And so that capital plan is also supported with a maintenance plan that handles and looks at the more day-to-day realities that may never hit a true level of capital plan expenditure, and that is equally important. That kind of attention to our facilities is realized in the operational budget and the line items that you see in the operational budget. Ensure all students in educational program consistent with the curriculum frameworks and prepare all students for success in district-based and state assessments. A lot of work goes on each and every day through professional development opportunities that Greg Marknow has done a masterful job moving forward with. Five years ago, we launched Atlas. We are through our mapping process for the most part, but throughout that alignment, we've needed to provide support for our teachers so they can support our students in the areas of mathematics, language arts, and now the next-generation science standards. And so that work continues, and that is reflected in the students' performance, academic performance, and also their enjoyment. We heard Jill earlier say, "This is fun," and that's how we want students to feel. So all that good work is taking place. Much of the funding for the professional development that our teachers enjoy is grant-funded. And so we continue to appreciate the availability of these funds, and through also the operational budget, there are line items that support curriculum R and D and professional development. Very much important for us to stay current. We are preparing for MCAS two-point-oh rollout. Lots of information and presentations being shared with parents and students, and certainly our teachers are becoming very proficient in this. And the good news is we are ready for the MCAS two-point-oh on-computer assessment environment this year. Leo Brem, our tech director, is here, and that's going to roll nicely into the educational technology and our funding goals articulated in our strategic plan, supported with our technology implementation plan, all available on the web. This year, through good work, infrastructure upgrades that will continue through to next year's budget, support from donations for science, for math, for technology, support through grants, through support through our PTOs who we here present, when we present school improvement plans, and through the support of NEF, who has launched a Chromebook initiative. We are very pleased to say that our K fives will be two to one, all of our K fives, by the end of this year, and Malacan Middle will be one to one next year through the support of all of these initiatives, but also this year's operational budget. We're very excited about that. Our tech team is working diligently to not only provide us with that device-to-student ratio, but also the infrastructure necessary to support that. And we have, I believe, a very well-defined process of renewing our technology, not only renew by recycling and purchasing new, but maximizing the potential of each device by finding ways to dedicate those laptops, those iPads that maybe are generation ago so that they fit the needs of specific, maybe one-application kinds of experiences in the classroom. So Leo is also here, if there are follow-up questions for technology. So, Leo is also here if there are follow-up questions for technology. So, our preliminary budget supports all of that good work and more. In general, what we are realizing this year, not only because of enrollment, but because of some of the shifts that we talked about earlier in personnel, some really proactive programming shifts that they're doing at each of the grade levels, looking at how we can maximize hu- human capital and instructional resources. We're looking at, to this point, at a 4.0 reduction and a .6 reduction in instructional technology. So, you might be thinking, "Wait a minute, we just talked about one to one and two to one. How can we be thinking about reducing instructional technology?" Well, we're not. But we are reducing a portion, a .6 Northborough portion, of an individual who will be providing and already on staff, more district-wide support. Because as technology continues to evolve, the devices and so forth, so does the need for our technology support folks. And what we've identified is that while we will continue to provide the necessary supports at the building level, we also recognize that there's a shift in need, more of a management kind of overarching view as opposed to device-to-teacher or device-to-student issues. So, what that means is actually a reduction on the Northborough side of .6 of this position. The other pieces of that will be picked up by the other two districts, so it will be a district position. Overall, staff reduction of 4.6. I mentioned all of these positions, .5 math coordinator, 1.0 clinical licensed social worker. What I did not mention, which is directly connected to student supports and addressing student needs, and I'm very pleased to share with you that this is a proposal for next year. It's been brought forward at least six years, and that is the addition of a guidance counselor at Malick and Middle. There are three grades there. This will give them three guidance counselors to support the needs of our students that are ever-changing and ever-challenging and growing at the middle school level. And so, we're very thrilled that we're able to do that. But I'd like to share how that happened. It was really a collaborative conversation with Michelle, Principal Carr. We have a staff member who will be retiring through some changes in structure and some proactive things that they've been doing at Malick and Middle. Not only were we able to capitalize on that by adding the 1.0, but in the end, we also believe there will be some savings which has been factored back into the operational budget. So, very excited about that, which means we're at a 2.5 proposed staff. Each one of those addressing a different piece of our goals, statements. And so, speaking about increased needs, at each point of those, as we go through those goals, we can identify an area where the time for not only our administrators, but also the support staff is taxed. With even the changes in the policy, with the changes in the new assessments, what we are proposing is to increase by 20 days, which would mean four additional days, five additional days at each of the four schools for secretarial support. It's a small increase on the operational budget, but the impact that would be felt at each one of our schools is significant. I will also share with you that this has been a request for at least six years. We, Rhoda came to our meeting, I think presented at our school committee meeting. And every time Rhoda comes to us, we hear not only about what wonderful work she's doing, but about the changing demands in that position. And as we know, she is the district director. So, ELL is what she does in all three districts. She has a support person, obviously there are folks in each of our schools. We've worked hard to bring our ELL staff up to parity in all of our schools to support our students' needs and our ever-growing population of 18 languages, I think Rhoda presented this year. Five of them are brand-new. So, this is a 40% budget increase of a .4 position. And everyone is squinting. So, because it's district, .4 of this 1.0 is on a grant. It's a Title III grant, and that Title III supports a lot of the ELL programming that we do in district. So, because Northborough's portion of that is 40%, it's 40% of .4 of the total cost of this position. Again, not a significant increase in budget, but a major impact on, on how we can provide some support for our ELL program. So, overall, we're doing all of those wonderful things. We still are presenting an overall reduction of 2.1 FTEs. Talk a little bit about this, I just want to just highlight a few of these things, because again, because it's done, it's not always visible. And so, when we move forward with the budget increase, what you don't see is the cost of the students being retained in district, right? Those captured funds that are still the students in district. The savings of the conversations that we're having when we initially propose staff and say, "You know what, let's really dig really deeply into this topic and see what we can do to better realize the outcomes we are seeking." And it starts by really looking at our student needs always. Maximizing those grant opportunities, writing a grant is a very long, intensive process. Finding the grants is equally difficult and challenging sometimes. And again, our staff, our administrators, our central office find the time to do that, because it enhances our fiscal health and allows us to do some of the things we want to do. Upgrading of technology, Leo is quite well-versed on E-rate. And we will, you can be assured that he is going to capitalize on any E-rate dollars that are available out there to help us do some of the infrastructure upgrades. That's a healthy match on infrastructure upgrades. We don't have the total dollars yet, because it's still unknown. But that, again, will offset the cost and allow us to move forward with our technology. I would also add that not only will we, will we be one to one in Malick and next year, but our hope is to go one to one at three to five in all of our four elementary schools. That's our next target, that's our next goal. And then, the other thing that's really important is benchmarking against our line item funding. Principals Cheryl, Levecq, everyone at Central has spent a lot of time looking at those benchmarked financial figures in our line item to assure that whatever is funded is needed and spent. So, we've done an extensive amount on that, and you'll probably look at the budget and see some reductions in some of the fund codes or some of the line item. And that's part of the process, which is really just a renewal process that's, that should, that we undertake every three or four years, just to make sure we're benchmarking against actuals, actual expenditures. Last but never least is the positive relationship we experience with our professional teachers and all of our support staff. This year, we are engaged in collective bargaining with all three associations in Northborough. We have made significant progress, and we are very hopeful that we will realize the positive outcome that we all desire within two to three weeks, at least with the Teachers Association at this point. Still underway, can't share anymore, but I think everybody is very positive. It's been a wonderful experience, little change in structure, but lots of great conversation. So, I just give a nod to the Teachers Association. We have two of the, the only two presidents and vice presidents in the audience, and they are usual, usual and frequent visitors, and that we, we appreciate. Peter and Melissa. There they are. Thank you for everything and all the work that you've put into this process so far. It's much appreciated. So, with all of that said, at this point, preliminary increase. Twenty-two million, seven-hundred-nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars appropriated in FY 2017 for 2018. At this point, and I again want to focus on the word preliminary. It is preliminary because there's a lot of information that's still not known that potentially impacts the budget. The governor has not issued his budget. We still have staffing shifts that may occur between now and the recommended budget. And in 30 days, things can change. And that's why we sort of give a preview to the budget, and we'll be visiting this recommended budget again, hopefully next month. Where it's entirely possible, we could vote. But we also have it out for March 1st, in case we're not at that point and there are other changes. We talk a lot about grants and think this other point is important. Our special ed costs are offset each year by something called Circuit Breaker. It is a pass-through through the state, provides funding to support students, support services. We always partner with our town when they have the legislative board that comes to the town hall each year and really stresses the import, we stress the importance of making sure that that is fully funded. It continues to move slightly upward, and Cheryl, I think we're in, what, 70% range at this point with Circuit Breaker reimbursement, for some cost, not all cost, to calculate the qualifying cost. But we have an offset to apply to the FY 18 budget this year, nine-hundred-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars, which has been factored into the preliminary budget. All of that said, we're looking at an eight-hundred-ninety-three thousand, seventy-five dollar increase over FY 2017 for a percent increase preliminary budget, 3.93%. So, thank you very much, happy to answer any questions. We'll be back next month with an update, and I'm sure there'll be some more information to share at that point. So, again, thank you to the community, and thank you for all of the support from the school committee and our professional staff.
This time, I'll open it up to colleagues. Any comments, questions, distress?
Great job. It looks wonderful. It's been an awful lot of work went into this, and I would approve it as it is, but perhaps we should wait the 30 days until next month for a vote. But I think what you presented tonight is phenomenal. You've already gotten it down to 3.93 with a lot of great adjustments and a lot of needs still being met. I'm sure that not everything that was on the principal's wish list is going to be able to be granted. But as usual, we strive to meet our budget goals, and I think that you've done that with this, with what you presented tonight. Great job, thank you.
Jill?
I'd just like to thank you, Christine, Greg, Cheryl, and the staff that are here tonight, especially for all the hard work that's gone into this. I think you started way back in October, and, you know, you're just getting used to the rigmarole of school and everything like that, and the budget has to be already formulated for next year. And while you've been doing, taking care of the needs of the kids during the regular days for the 16, 17th school year, you have looked ahead with great vision for the next upcoming school year and in years. I applaud the technology. I think that is absolutely fantastic to have Malick and Middle to be one-on-one and to have the elementary schools to be two to one, especially when we're going to be going to the MCAS 2.0 Park that's going to be computer-based. And I know when Christine and Patty were in the audience when we went to, oh, that was a couple of years ago.
Like a hundred years ago.
Yeah, it was like a hundred years ago, but it was only like two or three. And they were talking about it, and there was one school that was saying that they were going to take a set of Chromebooks, and that they were going to have to take them, like, you know, maybe three carts of Chromebooks. And each of the schools would have to be doing the MCAS 2.0 on separate days, because they were just going to designate these carts to travel. And this allows the flexibility and, you know, school, things that happen. You have a snow day when you're supposed to be taking MCAS, or some kids are absent. And this takes care of all the needs and keeps it all school-centered, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing for Northborough. And I'd also applaud the, so thank you very much for the technology, that's wonderful. And also the Ed Foundation and the, and everyone who has supported that. And especially for the principals who have had that initiative in the back of their minds. I mean, we've come so far in technology, it's, it's unbelievable. And especially to the special ed, to think about how that program, under your conception, is going to be able to keep students in-house, and that will save us cost besides the income out, is also transportation. Transportation sometimes is just as large as the education that children get on a daily basis. And just the innovation, I think Northborough and Southborough and the region have always been in the forefront, no matter what it is. And this just shows that even though we have new staff coming in and new leadership, it just keeps on growing. So, I'm proud to be a Northborough citizen, and thank you very much for everything you've done.
Anyone else? Again, convey the thanks of the committee to everybody who worked many, many hours on putting this budget together. And we look forward to seeing maybe some final tweaks as we get forward, as we move forward, but.
Tweaks is a good way to put it.
Yeah, little things here and there, but we'll, we'll see the next one, and again, this looks really good, so, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on. We have no educational policy to distribute at this time. We do have a distribution of the school calendar, I-100. I don't know if you want to comment on that at all, but it is in the packet.
It's just in the packet for distribution. I thank the school committee for reviewing this policy and moving it forward so efficiently. Big changes made to that.
Yeah, for everyone in the community, this is online, and so if you want clarity on what you can, what plans you can make for vacation in 2017, 2018 school year, it's all out there. And we'll move to audience sharing. So, we have some members in the audience. We have people in the house. I will open it up to anyone out there first. Happy New Year. We'll move to our principals. If you have anything, I know we've just started back up, so.
Okay, great.
Any of my colleagues? We're easy to that, excellent.
And we're talked out for the moment.
We are.
Presented out.
Personnel items, personnel report is in your packets as well. And then we have communications, if you wanted to say something about the first.
I, I just wanted to mention, I don't know if Michelle would like to mention something about Nancy Fajani's retirement after many years of serving Malick and well.
Yes, sure.
And outstanding teacher.
Sure.
Member of the Malick and family.
Nancy Fajani, who was a teacher here for 12 years, teaching seventh and eighth grade mathematics, retired at the end of December. So, we wish her well in the next phase of her life.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Okay, we have notices in your, so you've got plenty of communications. Recipient of the Anna Seaver Award.
I would just like to extend my congratulations to both Mrs. Malisi and Mr. Phelps on their awards, or the Anna and Seaver awards that they received, which I assume it was, as usually, the day, just the last day of school before the holiday break. Is it usually that day that you presented them?
This year, we, we mixed it up a lit, little, usually it's at breakfast time, and this year it was at lunch. So, we actually had the privilege of moving from Peaslee over to Z, and then back to Peaslee again, because we missed the, missed the lunch hour the first time. So, it was well-received in both schools. Wonderful recognition of achievement and educational excellence from our teaching staff.
And we have, let's see, school newsletters, the financial trend monitoring report that was presented by John Cudair is in your packets as well. And future agenda items, so we will have another budgetary presentation for February. Capital will be back.
Got a couple of policies?
We've got some policies. We, the subcommittee, the subcommittee has some policies that we're going to be bringing forward. So, that will be some good thing, something to look forward to. Anything else for February?
I think we, Jen, your presentation is scheduled for April.
April.
Nope, so no school, two left, and that won't be until after town meeting, I think, or just about.
Anything else comes up, please reach out to me, reach out to Christine, and we'll certainly get it on the, get it on the agenda. All right, we have, I'm sure, some things that Cheryl would like. All right, we have, I'm sure, some things that Cheryl would like us to sign. And I will entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn and we move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee and we have no intent to return to open session.
And this is a roll call vote, so, again.
Yes.
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 Again, thank you very much and we will see you next month.